Good evening, and we're going to get started at the planning commission for October 22nd. We'll start with the legions.
It's all slick.
And roll.
Commissioner Folgar? Here. Commissioner Hernandez?
I am present.
Vice Chair Benjamin?
Here and present.
Chair Holt?
Here.
And Commissioner Reddick is absent this evening.
Very good. Moving on to the approval of minutes for October 8th, 2019. Do you have any changes or motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to public comment, this is an opportunity for public comments for items not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, we need a green card. I don't have any items, any green cards for items not on the agenda, so we'll open up the public comment period. We'll close it, not seeing anybody wishing to speak, and we can move into planning commission business. We did have a request to amend the agenda, to move up item 1.c to the first item. I understand all parties are in agreement to that, so we'll go ahead and do that. Take item 1.c, which is the appeal of community development permit. We'll move that first, and I believe Winter King will be giving us that presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commission and Chair Holt, thank you. This item is an appeal from the Community Development Director's determination that certain development at 392 Greenbrier Road was undertaken without a CDP, that a CDP was required, a coastal development permit was required, and that through code enforcement, the director determined that the property owner must either remove the improvements or obtain a CDP to come into compliance with the code and the LCP. The appeal was first agendized for August 27th, 2019, and was continued to tonight to allow the parties to provide additional information and give this some additional thought. Because the Community Development Director, I guess I'm just on the background. Because the director was acting in her capacity as a code enforcement officer when she issued her decision, she is not presenting this item to you tonight. She's not advising you on whether to uphold or overturn her decision, and that's why I'm presenting this matter. So in my presentation, I'll go over a little bit of history of the development that's at issue, the issue that's before you as an appellate body here tonight, the law that you'll be applying, and then your options. A brief description of the evidence that's been put in the record, and then your options for making a decision on the appeal.
Winter, just a point of order, could we have the IT folks turn off the news?
Oh.
Creates the wrong kind of ambiance.
Thank you for pointing that out. There was baseball on before. That might have been the better kind of ambiance.
My ADHD can't handle the TV. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the development that's at issue here is a cement patio or deck that was installed in the backyard of 392 Greenbrier Road, which is located in Ocean Colony subdivision. In 2002, the Ocean Colony Association authorized development of a small cement deck to replace an existing wood deck that had apparently rotted. In 2018, the individuals who own the property behind 392 Greenbrier informed the city that the development in the backyard at 392 Greenbrier Road exceeded a small cement patio, and in fact, there was a solarium and a cinder block structure, as well as a patio that went up to, right up to their property line and was leading up to and on top of a retaining wall. The city staff started an investigation. The owners of 392 Greenbrier removed the solarium and the cinder block structures, so those are not at issue. They've been removed. However, there still is the hardscaped patio that extends from the house to the property line at a slope of about 3%. And the owners of 392 Greenbrier asserted that this patio was legal and did not need to be removed or altered, and it wasn't a code violation. Staff, including the building inspector and the Community Development Director, inspected the property and determined that the patio did violate the zoning code because it was built without a coastal development permit, and no exception or exemption to the CDP requirement applied. And I'll talk a little bit more about the evidence that they had to support that determination in a minute. Staff did suggest a number of ways that the owners could remedy the situation, and when the owners declined to undertake those steps, the Community Development Director issued her final determination that there was a violation and that the remedy for that was either to remove the improvements or come in for a corrective CDP for the patio. That's the decision that the owners appealed to you, and that's the decision you're reviewing tonight. So the question that's presented to you is whether a coastal development permit was required for the patio. In the staff report, we provided you with basically excerpts of the municipal code provisions that apply here, which basically track the Coastal Act requirements related to the same issues. Section 18.20.25 in your municipal code, sorry, it's not up there. I just want to point out, it's not in the staff report, but that's where you find the actual requirement that says, unless an exemption applies, all development requires a CDP. So the key issues here are, was this development as defined in the code? And then, does it fall into one of the exemptions that are also listed in the code? Development is defined, and again, this is in your staff report, very broadly. It includes the placement of any solid material on land. So we're all familiar with this definition. It's very, very broad. Staff concluded that the patio, the pouring of cement for this patio was development. So then the question becomes, did this patio fall under one of the exemptions to the CDP requirement? And here, we've put in the staff report the relevant exemption that we understand the appellant is relying on here. And that's an exemption for, and I'm reading here from section 18.20.030(c) to (c), which says, additions to existing family residences and improvements normally associated with single-family residences, such as garages, swimming pools, fences, storage sheds, and landscaping, except as otherwise provided, are typically exempt. The reason why staff concluded, and the Community Development Director concluded, that this patio doesn't fall into that exemption is that the scope of the patio, in terms of its reach up to the property line with no setbacks, and its impacts on neighboring property, we believe takes it out of the definition of what's normally associated. In other words, we think this is not a typical patio in large part because of the evidence that staff has seen of impacts particularly related to stormwater runoff onto the neighboring property. So you'll see in your packet, in the staff report, and the other materials that you've been provided, that when staff visited the site and reviewed the materials, and I think even in the documentation submitted by the appellant's engineers, it's apparent that this is a hardscape surface from the house to the property line, which is on top of a retaining wall, and it directs stormwater off that patio onto the neighboring property and is impacting that neighboring property. You'll see the appellant has submitted letters and evidence and will have an opportunity to present why it thinks this patio is exempt and should be considered normally associated. They basically assert that it's not really harming the neighboring property, although again, their engineer report does note that the stormwater runoff is going off of their hardscape onto the neighboring property. But they generally assert that the retaining wall is old and past its useful life and should be repaired anyway. And the appellant also asserts, so this is the property owner at 392 Greenbrier, that the patio was built pursuant to a permit from the HOA back in 2002. The neighboring property owners and the property behind the 392 Greenbrier have submitted letters in support of the Community Development Director's decision and have asserted and provided photos and other evidence that the patio is causing and has caused damage to their property and that it was not actually built in compliance with the CCNRs for the subdivision and that the permit that was issued didn't actually allow such a big patio as was eventually built. They also note that the permit indicates that the project was not supposed to affect the site grade or drainage, but that the patio that was actually built does both. So given this evidence and the municipal code provisions that apply, the commission has a couple of options. You could deny the appeal, which would result in upholding the Community Development Director's determination that a coastal development permit was required and would essentially send the matter back for the further code enforcement activities of how to remedy the zoning code violation. And in the director's letter, she noted two options, either remove the improvements or obtain a CDP. The CDP might have conditions on it to remedy the impacts to the neighboring property. That would be a process that's not before you tonight. That would be handled separately in processing any application for a corrective CDP. The other option is to grant the appeal. If the appeal is granted, that would mean you would have determined that the Community Development Director's decision was not correct, likely because you would have determined that the project was exempt and did not require a CDP initially. So that would be the implication of granting the appeal. The owner would not need to obtain a CDP, a corrective CDP, in that instance for their patio improvement. However, the city engineer, who is also here tonight to answer technical and other questions if you have it, may still need to review some building code issues related to structural integrity and drainage. So I also wanted to note that late this afternoon, I believe we received some additional information from the appellant. Again, as I noted, this item had been continued from an August meeting in the hopes that the parties would maybe work out a practical, on-the-ground solution to the issue here. And the information that we got suggests that the appellant is willing to make some improvements and address some drainage issues. I had the opportunity to talk with staff about this. Obviously, this is just coming in now, so no one has had much time to review it or give it deep thought, but I just wanted to report that staff is pleased that they have gotten some movement on this. However, my recommendation is going to remain the same. I believe that considering any of these improvements would be part of the process of processing a corrective coastal development improvement and that staff could work through some of these issues on sort of a technical, on-the-ground solution as part of that process. So if there are any clarifying questions, I'm happy to answer them now. Otherwise, we do have a couple of presentations, I believe, and public comment.
Great, thank you very much. As mentioned, I do believe it was decided the property owner would get 10 minutes to present, and the neighborhood get 10 minutes, and then we would open it up for public comments. So with that, at this time, are there any clarifying questions on the materials presented?
Has the, through the chair, has the Ocean Colony HOA provided any feedback on this situation?
I haven't seen any written correspondence. Let me see if the city engineer knows if there's been any other feedback.
Not to my knowledge. I have not received any communication from Ocean Colony partners.
And have you reviewed the original permit that was submitted to the HOA?
Yes, I have, and we actually have copies of that. I think there were bits and pieces in the staff report and in the comment letters from the public, but we have the full application, if that would be useful.
And I'll be happy to take that. In summary, though, just to kind of pull together this lengthy staff report, the existing conditions are not in conformance with the project that was submitted to the HOA. Is that fair?
There is evidence of that. It's, you know, the city is not enforcing the HOA's permit here, so really, that information is just provided by way of background and also for us to gauge what is normally associated patio development. So the permit, which actually I believe is in the materials that, is that right? Oh, okay. We'll pass it out now. It, you know, is an application that shows that as part of the application, there was information submitted that this project would be consistent with the CCNRs. There's also a diagram which is somewhat difficult to assess, given that it's not a particularly technical diagram. However, I think that perhaps the neighbors or the property owners would talk more about their positions on whether the current development is in conformance. It appeared to staff that this development was beyond the scope of what was allowed by the CCNRs, as are attached to that permit application. But again, I just want to make clear that the city is not enforcing the CCNRs here. This is just evidence in the record for you to consider as you decide whether this patio was normally, the type of normally associated development that falls under the exemption.
Thank you.
Commissioner Folgar, any clarifying questions? Okay, so with that, let's go ahead and turn it over to the property owner. Mr. Lort, you're free to make a presentation. Make sure that the green light is on on the microphone.
Thank you. My name is John Lortz. I've resided at 392 Greenbrier Road for 34 years. I wish to thank the Honorable Chairman, the Commissioners, and the city staff for your time and effort regarding this issue. The association approved our patio 17 years ago, with the approval also of the neighbor at that time, at that residence, that's in conflict today. It also met the requirements that the CCNRs had requested. The drawing, of course, I'm not a technical engineer, but it's to the dimensions. And what we were replacing was a wooden patio, wood patio that had, eventually had also rotted away. We have worked very closely with the city staff. And I'd like to thank them for their time also. They've been very good to work with. We provided all the evidence that they have requested. We also would like, hopefully, have you grant us an exception to the coastal development permit exception. And the other issue too is, as I said, the patio's been there 17 years. We are addressing the drainage that is coming off of the patio, and it's also in the engineers' drawings. With that, I'd like to thank you, and if there's any questions I may address?
Are there any questions of the property owner? Questions? CNN, thank you very much.
There's just one last thing I forgot to say. As far as we, I'm sorry. Oh, the photos. This is, I know it's difficult to comment on something that's on paper. This is the patio that is there today. And it is all concrete. It's three inches thick. This is where I measured, this is the three inches of the concrete. This starts at the entrance and is the total patio. During the 17 years until recently, as far as I know, we've never received any negative comments or impact for this concrete patio. And I think the biggest concern we have is to make sure that there is no drainage on our neighbor's property. And that's why the engineered we hire, Sigma, has addressed on how we are going to resolve that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If we have any additional questions, we'll be sure to reach out. So with that, we have 10 minutes for the neighboring property owner to speak. I do have two cards here for both the, for both the residents of 392 Greenbrier. So are you speaking together as part of this? Will there be separate, I just, we can wrap in your comments all in one presentation?
Thank you. I wanted to just comment on some of the things that were questioned earlier. One was the 2002 permit that Ocean Colony issued for the patio. This permit was for a patio that was six to eight inches thick. Now, Mr. Lortz has said it is three inches thick. If you look at the photographs and the evidence we have, the patio is two feet thick. You will find, this is one far end of it, and you can see three or four different levels of concrete. That has now been covered with sand and stones, but it's Level C that is now the surface of this patio. There used to be earth, you know, cut into the land between us and our neighbors that ranged in height along the area where the patio is, of about one feet foot to about two and a half feet. It has been replaced with a concrete ledge that's four feet tall. And you can see from this, well, the photograph that the Lortzes showed you, the furniture on this patio that they removed from their yard and put on it is only inches from the edge of a four-foot drop-off. In order to put a fence to protect the drop-off, you would have to violate the municipal code, which limits the height of fences atop retaining walls to a total height of six feet. That allows a two-foot fence on the patio. So what we're saying is, the patio needs to be cut back five feet so that it is then, at the original level, it was never given a permit. In fact, in the application, the Lortzes said they were not going to change the elevation or grade. They also said they were not going to change the drainage. They were given a permit for something six to eight inches thick. They were, the permit doesn't even show the property line, which is required, when in fact, the patio goes to the property line. The permit drawing shows that there would be a hedge between the edge of the patio and our property, and another hedge between, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, the patio and the pixland. Well, this patio goes to both property lines. It stresses our retaining wall. It has been cut back significantly, but still, there is a great deal of weight on the retaining wall. And we all agree it needs to be replaced. But we can't replace it until we remedy this situation and figure out at what level the retaining wall ought to be and how strong it needs to be. We hired Daniel Dykman, who analyzed the situation from our side, and his estimate is that the surcharge load is four to 11 times what it would be without the concrete. So there is quite a difference in the reports that we have seen. And I think when it comes to determining whether or not this should be permitted tonight, it really needs to go into a coastal development permit when all of this can be analyzed. The strategy for the remedy was only presented to us after 4:00 PM today. And we all need a chance to look at these things. But Ocean Colony was told, you know, the chart, it didn't show the property line. They said that it would, their letter says that it complies with the CCNRs, and clearly, it doesn't. The CCNRs require a five-foot setback. The CCNRs require that a special plan be submitted if you're going to change the drainage or the elevation and grade. No such plan was submitted. The CCNRs, well, the plan said it was six to eight inches thick. It's almost two feet thick. If you look at this picture, there is a screwdriver at the bottom of that tape measure. And we were probing, you can see the concrete tool about- And we were probing, you can see the concrete tool about, oh, three inches from the bottom of that. But then we probed with screwdrivers to see where, you know, there was earth. And this is the approximate height of the concrete at the retaining wall in that place. You know, the idea that there's a three-inch slab is, I don't know how you can say that sort of thing. But this is, we're asking you to approve the plant, the decision to require a permit for this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a call here for your husband, Paul Gregoriev. Did you have additional comments you wanted to make? Okay, so those are the two cards that I have here. So for public speakers, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Not, I guess I never actually opened up the public comment period. We'll open it and we'll close it, and then we can move it back to the commission for discussion.
Brian, I had a clarifying question maybe for Maz. This retaining wall here, does this abut the neighboring property or is there any kind of setback?
Based on what I've seen, the retaining wall is on the neighboring property and the patio comes up right adjacent to that retaining wall.
So there's no kind of setback whatsoever from the adjoining property?
No.
Okay. Did you say this goes on to the neighboring property?
The retaining wall, actually, from what I understand, from a corner record, it's actually on the other property, not on 392.
The Gregoriev property?
Correct.
Okay, got it. But the concrete goes right up to the retaining wall?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion at this time? Commissioner Polgar?
I was interested in Maz, actually, in the, in terms of the drainage issue, since that's one of the issues regarding whether there's a CDP that would be required. Is it possible to address the drainage without having a setback? I don't understand, because it seemed, I do see that the permit, it looks like it was, it does, it did require a setback, I mean, that's in there. So I'm not, you know, it doesn't seem, I don't understand how it would be resolved without the, without having a setback from the property line. Is there a way that that's, is that common?
I'll go back to one of the earlier images. From a strictly technical perspective, if you build a curb on that edge and you collect the runoff, because we're talking about a small square footage as far as the patio area, it's about 340 square feet from my estimation of the plans. I have not, just for the record, I have not been to the site up to this point, but based on the plans, it's about 340 square feet. So with the couple of inches of free board, you can, we can take a closer look at it, but it seems that we can put some sort of a curb on the edge to collect the stormwater before it reaches the retaining wall and redistribute it to another location.
Sorry, one more question. So, but I'm not understanding that, will you be able to address the drainage and then comply with the other municipal code requirements, like for the setbacks and for, like, I don't understand how that it's possible not to do any of those things and then have it meet the requirements of our, of the code for the city, but also it seems like for the permit itself.
I would answer that. There are no city setback requirements here. So the setback requirements that you see in the permit application are from the CCNRs, so the subdivision private regulation. And again, the city's not enforcing those. However, we're using that as sort of a rule of thumb about what normally associated patios would look like here. And the fact that the CCNRs say you have to have this setback suggests that a patio that goes right up to the top of a retaining wall on a property line is not normally associated with single-family development. And the other point I just want to make, just to be clear again about kind of the scope of what we're thinking about tonight, the issue of whether the drainage impacts can be resolved with or without a setback, again, is something to be considered as part of the corrective CDP process. So I appreciate that you want to know sort of the scope of what is technically feasible to correct the situation, but that's not on the agenda tonight for you. That would be something that would be considered as part of that CDP process.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. So took the words out of my mouth, but I just wanted to reflect on what I think the kernel of the question in front of us really is. It seems to me that the location of the retaining wall, what property it's on, the setback question, the height of the concrete are somehow secondary to the kernel question, which is, is this normal? And that is the question that hinges, that is the fulcrum of deciding whether this property is entitled to, this development is entitled to be treated as not requiring a permit under 30250 of the CCNR and the California Code of Regulations and the zoning ordinance. So all of the evidence I've heard from everybody is interesting, and I hope that it will contribute to resolving this question should we decide that the development director's requirement, finding that it requires a CDP holds. But for me, when I look around in our town and I think about the time I've spent in Ocean Colony, I don't see development that looks like this. I don't see concrete that is quite this expansive. So to me, this doesn't feel like it's normal. I think that the questions, it could be that for my colleagues, the height of it or it's the extent to which it approaches the property line or the impact it has in terms of the change of the flow of water or the permeability of the area that was covered or the number of times that development may or may not have occurred in the history of the site. Those things may influence your thinking about what is normal or not and further inform your thinking about whether this normalcy is an acceptable exemption. But as I, as I frame the problem for myself, that is the kernel. And my opinion is that this is not normal.
I tend to agree with the position as Jimmy laid it out. Sorry, not used to being so quiet. If you don't follow the standard of, you know, that's in the private standard, that's in that particular community, and we give a wide berth to Ocean Colony's HOA to sort of define what is normal, this doesn't feel like a normal patio. Certainly doesn't comport with the drawings in the original permit application in which there's a setback. So to me, this looks like it's development.
Yeah, I appreciated your explanation of the criteria and understanding the criteria for what would define normal, which I think makes sense based, using the CCNR code. I agree, I don't see that this does not fit with that, within the kind of constraints of being normal for what would be expected based on the, yeah, extent, the height and the change in the grade and the drainage.
Very good. I agree with the Commissioner's comments and just said, you know, I think these are the types of projects that I know, I believe, city staff and certainly the commission at least like to get engaged in. I think we would certainly all support a resolution that the neighbors work together and come up with a solution. But this is also why we have zoning codes and requirements for coastal development permits, is that we can evaluate all these questions in terms of compliance with setbacks and drainage and everything else. In this situation, it seems clear that it doesn't necessarily meet those terms and, as mentioned, doesn't necessarily meet the terms of, you know, what is normal and obviously a tricky situation with something coming up, right up to the, right up to the property line. So I appreciate staff's work. I appreciate your presentation. I think certainly concur with your advice and direction. And I just hope moving forward, you know, the coastal development permit process doesn't have to be onerous and doesn't have to be difficult. I think if the applicant and the neighboring property owner are able to work together, hopefully come up with a solution that the coastal development permit is an easy thing and we can be able to approve that no problem in the future. So I hope that would be the goal. So with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
One question for staff before we have a motion, please. So is this project in the commission appeals on, our decision could be appealed at the city council, I suppose, but is it also applicable to the coastal commission if, since the question is whether a permit's required, it's a little bit different than our usual stock and trade, so.
Yeah. Our research suggests that there is a hook for an appeal to the coastal commission if the city determined that the project was exempt. If the city determines that a CDP is required, we're not sure about that, but there is a specific provision of the coastal act that would allow an appeal from a determination that a project is exempt.
And the window for such an appeal is, what, five days? It's a little shorter than the usual?
Well, I assume there would have to be an appeal to the city council first from here to exhaust administrative remedies. And I didn't look into the timeline for any coastal commission appeal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Through the chair.
The second question that our attorney put to us is the question of, is there an exemption or does this project qualify for an exemption from a CDP? In reading the staff report and reviewing city code and the documents before us, I don't think this qualifies as a project that's typically exempt. I do think there is an impact on the adjoining property, and I'm concerned about the lack of setbacks. So I, I'm, I'm of the opinion that there is no exemption here.
Want a motion?
I'm willing to entertain a motion.
I move that we deny the appeal and confirm the community development director's determination that a coastal development permit is required for improvements located within the rear yard of a property developed with a single-family home located at 392 Greenbrier Road.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved unanimously. Thank you, and I'm sure this is not a comfortable situation for everybody, and I hope we can find a workable solution moving forward. Yeah, we'll move on to our regularly scheduled agenda. Item 1A, project and application for a sign program, architectural review and sign permit for 4210 Cabrillo Highway North.
Through the chair, perhaps we should let the community development director rejoin us if she's going to be here.
I believe Bridgette is going to text her Jill to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. Nice to see you all this evening. So this item consists of a sign program, architectural review, and sign permit for the existing signs that you see at Sam's Chowder House, as well as a change to the, one of the wall signs that recently burned up and was removed. It was a big neon fish and replaced with a neon halo-lit business sign. And then also, they'd like to remove the existing wooden monument sign that's kind of close to the highway. And now, the purpose of the sign program is to provide flexibility with a unique commercial site to allow signage that normally would not be allowed under our current sign code. Given the unique location with the highway as well as the coastal trail, a sign program does, we think that makes sense for this particular site. This slide includes a bird's eye view of the site. You'll notice that it includes three parcels. Two are dedicated to the parking lot, and then the northern parcel includes the restaurant and gift shop. So this slide includes the, has, shows the fish, the neon fish that used to be there. And the photograph on the right shows what they would like to install. And then here we have the, both the two monument signs. The one on the right is proposed for removal, and the one on the left is the, sort of the cabinet box that they would like to maintain. And then here are a few of the, you know, the existing signs that exist on the outside of the restaurant. Both of these are on the front. This gift shop sign on the top and then a larger Sam's Chowder House sign in the back. And then, of course, the bar and then the sign along the coastal trail. All of this is included in the proposed sign program. So this slide includes the, normally what would be allowed, you know, which would be three signs totaling 120 square feet. And then what's proposed is, you know, maintaining and modifying the signs to end up with nine exterior signs totaling 226 and a half square feet. And that's about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The business owner is also here. He'd be happy to answer any questions and any feedback on the sign program. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any clarifying questions? Commissioner Benjamin.
Yes, so I visited the site, saw the signs that were mentioned. I also noticed there were a number of parking signs. And while I'm not expected to be incorporated, I just wanted to confirm my, your understanding of the ordinance, that this is about signs that, you know, the parking signs are not part of this program and aren't to be considered in the context of the other signs for purposes of this program.
Yes, that's correct. They have not been included in the sign program. Now, if the commission does feel that it's appropriate to include those signs in the sign program, we could certainly have those added and, you know, by, you know, just by adding a condition, and then those could be incorporated into the sign program if we feel that's important.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not taking an opinion. I just wanted to get clarity on what, you know, their relevance. And I'll hold my other questions in case there's a presentation that may answer.
Sir, any additional questions, clarifying question?
While there's maximum sign area square footage allowed is 120 square feet, we're actually reducing the square footage from the existing signage, correct?
Yes, that's correct, actually. If you, so especially when it comes to the previous neon fish, that is quite a bit larger than the proposed sign, and then also the removal of the wooden monument sign.
Great, thank you.
Is there any additional questions from you? Okay, with that, we can go ahead and open public comment period. I don't have any cards on this. I'm not sure if the applicant would like to say anything. We're just available here for questions. Not seen anything. We'll close the public comment period and bring it back to discussion.
Through the chair. Thank you. So the only, my reaction to this was it was fine. I wasn't concerned about the program changes. The one question that I wanted to get clarity on that I did not get is the experience before and after with respect to the view from Highway 1 and the public spaces on the east side of Highway 1. We're looking at a significant, you know, sweeping vista, and I just wondered if you could briefly summarize how the light will change, whether we get an improved view from the public spaces east of the we get an improved view from the public spaces east of the restaurant.
So the only substantive change would be with the actual wall sign. Probably a net decrease in the amount of neon. Typically halo-lit signs emit less light than, you know, normal indirect lighting. So although, you know, there wasn't a light study done.
I wasn't asking.
In general, I think it would be a decrease in the amount of illumination.
And then related, the hours of operation of the lit signs, maybe I, you know, I don't drive that area often enough at night. But are the lit signs open when the restaurant is not open?
I've had a chance to drive by several times at night the past few weeks and I've noticed that they do turn off the light, the business lights when the restaurant is closed. But that might be a good question for the business owner. So.
Is that a, okay, I'll ask. Thank you. Okay, that's right. It's time to ask. So does staff, if the owner could advise, is it your intention to turn off the signs when the restaurant? If you could go to the dais, I'm sorry, for the record, we have to.
Yeah, they're on a timer. So they automatically go off at midnight. They go on, what time they go on? Depends on, yeah. But they do go off after, at midnight.
Thank you. Is there, would it be a recommendation from staff to have a lights-out condition in the permit for when the business is not operating?
That was not one of our recommendations. We, you know, our intent was to leave it open for the owner to decide when the lights would be on and off.
Would the owner have any objection?
Well, no, but we do it now. You know, it's, we save energy that way and there's no reason for us to keep them on three, four, or five in the morning.
I see.
I don't have an objection, but we've done it there 13 years now and.
Right. I'm not suggesting it as a remedial kind of step. I just want to try to be sure we've done a good job of understanding our visual resource and respecting it. Thank you very much. Thank you for the questions.
Any questions from Commissioner Hernandez? No. Okay. I'll just add, you know, I had the opportunity to go to a concert recently at the Chase Center and I was excited to see that Sam's Chowder House was represented in the Chase Center in San Francisco. So it was great to see a little bit of Half Moon Bay there. So congratulations. That's a great space there. And I'm comfortable with this and happy to recommend that and take a motion.
I'm happy with it. I'm not sure, given that staff don't have a really, a position on changing the lighting, I'm not sure I'm comfortable adding any changes to the project right now other than recommending approval of the project as staff have recommended it.
Second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving forward to item 1B, study session on downtown mixed-use project. This will also be presented by Scott. Take it away.
As mentioned, this is a new mixed-use project proposed on South Main Street. And this is a, an opportunity for the planning commission to provide feedback on the project. And now, as seen as in the aerial photograph here, the site is surrounded by sort of a mixture of uses. To the east, we have two single-family residences across the street, a city park, Kitty Fernandez, and to the north and south, two commercial buildings. This slide shows the proposed site plan. And I tried to clarify the footprints in blue and then the proposed parking seven space, seven off-street parking spaces in red. This slide shows the first floor plan. And notice that on the ground floor, it's all commercial space in both the existing building and proposed along here, except for this corner over here, which includes one bedroom and some other entry space for one of the residential units on the second And then here is the second floor. And similarly, it's a mixture of uses where we have commercial on the existing building proposed on the second floor, commercial over here, fronting Main Street, and then the rest is residential that includes the two units. So this slide includes the required amount of off-street parking and the proposed. And you'll notice that normally 20 spaces would be required for the amount of square footage that's proposed for the residential and commercial. And only seven spaces are included. Now, the planning commission did recently have a study session in which you reviewed several proposed changes to our parking code. And those changes included eliminating the garage parking, reduction in the parking required for commercial uses from four spaces for 1,000 square feet down to 3.3 spaces for 1,000 square feet of commercial space. And then also a reduction in the total amount of off-street parking by 25% for mixed use. If that, those proposed changes were implemented, only 12 off-street parking spaces would be required for the proposed square footage. Now, the parking is a critical item for the planning commission to consider tonight and, you know, the comfort level with the parking exception that's requested because ultimately that's going to drive a lot of the design concerns with this particular project. So we're really asking for, you know, key feedback on, you know, parking in particular. And then we've also, we have this project tentatively scheduled for our recently created architectural advisory committee meeting for November 21st. So with that, I'd like to go through the proposed elevations and architectural plans. This slide includes the front elevation that faces Main Street, the existing building on the right, and then the proposed building, at least the portion that fronts Main Street on the left. Here's the side elevation, the south elevation that includes the four second-story balconies. You'll see here, here, and here. And then the opposite side, the north elevation. This slide includes a rendering of the west elevation. Another rendering. And as I said, that, you know, what we're hoping that the planning commission would start off with is the, you know, the comfort level with a parking exception. And then also any, since ultimately this is a project that would come to you for a decision, any other design thoughts or ideas would be helpful.
Great, thank you. I don't have any speaker cards on this item, so.
Oh.
Would you, if you would like to speak absolutely, please feel free.
Okay. I'm Janice Moody and that's my son, Robert Moody. And we're the owners of the property. And I just wanted to add a revision to this, what you've just seen, because as of this afternoon, we spoke with Scott and we were able to determine that we don't need all of those commercial parking spaces after all because we were under the impression that the front unit, the existing unit, had to be converted to commercial above. But it turns out we don't, so that can be an apartment space. So I recalculated the square footage so that that building in the existing on the right front, the top floor, would not be commercial, it would be a third apartment. And therefore, the existing building on the right, the lower square footage would be about 820 square feet. And on the left, that lower portion, small office space, would be 500 square feet. And then the upstairs, commercial unit would be 780, so roughly 2,000 square feet. So that, I think, equates to about eight spaces instead of, did you say 13 spaces? 12, instead of 12 spaces. So that would bring down the parking requirement by doing that, which we are fine with. We worked with a different planner three years ago when we started this whole process. It's been lengthy, not just the city. It's not really the city's fault. It's a slow process for us. But we started with a different planner and we were given different information. So now we were able to revise that based on talking with the building inspector and so forth today and with Scott. So I think that's it. That's all I need. Any questions?
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Okay.
If anything comes up, we will certainly reach out to you. Commissioner Benjamin.
Okay, so first I'll just mea culpa that I'm not an architect and my architectural taste is in my mouth. But there are a couple of things that struck me and I don't know if they'll resonate with my colleagues. I'll get to those right after I address the parking question. I don't feel like I have enough of a grasp of the changes that were proposed to, I appreciate staff going through the calculations. At some point, I'm sure that that will come up. But I'd like to offer my principles for thinking about this so that however the numbers work, you know, you have my feedback about how I'm going to react to those numbers. I believe that we have had good conversations about the potential for seeing parking spaces as both available for residences after a certain hour and available for other uses during the day. We know that that, that there's not a hard and fast line in terms of demand. When we talked about it at the planning commission as a policy matter, we entertained the possibility of restricting parking after a particular hour. But, you know, it was just talk. So it would need to be clear that the residences could reliably have the spaces that they need if this item were going to go forward as some kind of joint development. My impression, looking at the existing, which is to say before the changes that you've made, is that we did not have sufficient parking in the design, that it was, that it would have led to the project not working well. The off, the on-street parking alternative that was described in the note does exist today, but the south end of Main Street is an area that we are trying to encourage growth of activity on. And so my impression is that looking at the availability today is sort of like skating to where the puck is now as opposed to where it's going to be over the lifetime of this, what I hope will be a very successful development. So it could be that the changes in the design structure make a nicer overlap for parking. And I'm sure staff will think that through. But I want to be jealous about not seeing the parking requirement satisfied on the street. I wanted to work off the street. And it's okay for me if there's a bit of an overlap between uses that don't occur at the same time. But there needs to be enough for the residences without impacting and forcing the on-street parking to satisfy the commercial. With respect to the structure itself, my impression was that the elevations on the north and south were a bit flat. There wasn't a lot of articulation. And in one case, the lighting was, the lights were pretty minimal. That may be a reflection of the adjacent property and the limitations, all of the things being equal. I think a little more architectural interest on those elevations would be appealing. But, you know, it may well be that there's context that makes that infeasible. As usual, when I talk about parking, I almost never do it without talking about electric vehicles. So I'm assuming that we'll get guidance from our staff about the opportunity to seek that. Now, seeing the beginning of the General Motors and Audi Volkswagen, they're all saying that the future is electric. So if anything, we need to do a much better job of acknowledging that because during the life of this building, that will be a requirement. Now is the time to seek the ability. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Polgar?
My thoughts echo Commissioner Benjamin's. I too am concerned, I haven't also wrapped my head around the changes that the, were mentioned with the, the changes with the addition of the, replacement of the upstairs residential with, for the commercial. But in reviewing kind of the materials that we had, while I understood, you know, from our discussion back in July, I saw the merit of reexamining the parking requirements. And it definitely seemed as if what we had discussed and was proposed at that time to consider reflected reality of kind of what was, what was more appropriate. I also do think that it allowed, though, for considering growth in the area, which I think is a very important point, that this area is not necessarily just going to stay with the same uses. I think there will be more in that. And I don't, I felt like the, in seeing the amount of parking that was put forth for this at this stage, isn't meeting that need. And I would be concerned about that because I don't think that it's, it's fair to, and a good idea at this stage, to put so much of that off-site, the burden of it. Because I do think that it will, conditions will change and even under existing conditions, I don't think that it would be sufficient. I don't know what the change, since I haven't done the calculation, I don't know what the change would mean for the proposed changes of the, with the residential. But again, I'm concerned about such a significant difference in what's required. Like, that's a, that's a big difference in terms of parking availability that's offered on-site. And it, I think it's a good point that it could be, there are ways to mitigate that a bit with the timing of parking. We've talked about that before. So I certainly am supportive of that. I just think that the difference in this case is too big even. And also, I've spent a lot of time in this area. And so I will say that some of the areas that were, could have talked, discussed in, I think, one of the attachments as, you know, available parking, I don't see them being that available that often even now. So I'd be concerned about relying on that to make up for the lack of parking on-site. So those are my thoughts. I, I'll be honest, I didn't have a lot of thoughts on the architectural side. I'm looking forward to hearing what the architectural review board has to say and I'm going to leave it at that.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Scott, have you had a chance to look at the revised numbers for the parking if the top unit is converted to residence?
Yes, I was just looking at that. And so normally, four spaces would be required under our current code for the commercial space, one space for every 250 square feet. If that's converted to a residential unit, only two garage spaces would be required under our current code. So it would, it would be a reduction of two spaces, basically. So, so just to kind of summarize where we're at right now, under the existing code, we have a requirement for 20 space. We had a requirement for 20 spaces based on the project that was originally proposed. With the changes, the current code would require 18 spaces. And then based on the study sessions we've had about parking, we would go down to 10. And then based on the study sessions we've had about parking, we would go down to 10 total off-street parking spaces. Is that where you end up? Or have I got my math completely wrong?
You did not get your math completely wrong, but it doesn't quite scale down that way, the way it had been proposed. And so I'm glad you're talking about this study session, because we've been trying to use it a little bit to see how it's working. For the existing building, the 1,000 square feet, as Scott mentioned, the code of the day is one space per 250 square feet. We were proposing to change that to 1 to 300. So it's about, it would require about three. And then a unit would require one and a half spaces. So it's still kind of just knocking one or two off. And I think the applicant talked about some other conversions as well. So we, we really need to run the numbers for you. I think what staff needs to hear in, in working with our applicant is order of magnitude about this. If, we're very concerned about the proposal that came in as it is. We are encouraging the applicant to shift it in the way that she presented to you. I still think it's going to be short. And if we're using the draft ideas that we had over the summer, and you have some level of comfort with it, it helps us to look at that with the applicant. Those were scaled, they were basically calibrated in a way to match some of the exceptions that the commission has approved. And they were also codes that are similar in character to, to other mixed-use parking codes that we've seen in other cities that work pretty well. Trying to not go too, too strongly into it, because you don't have transit.
I'm sorry, if you have comments.
Feel free, we can keep it casual tonight.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't, I didn't do the math earlier in the day. And I, you know, I shot him an email like at a quarter to five today, so I'm sorry that Scott wasn't fully aware of the recalculations that I did. But I, I estimated, I took out any storage area, any unused space in these, in these units, and calculated 2,000 square feet of commercial space. So that, or 2,100 maybe tops. So that was my calculation. So if you use the revised figures that were presented, that would equate to maybe even seven spaces, or something like that nature, for a commercial. And then the seven for the three apartments and the one guest space. So that's, that's what I came up with. But, you know, we'll, we'll let them figure that out as well, confirm that. And regarding the architectural design, I know you're not the Design Committee, but I just wanted to point out that we're not crazy about the north and south elevations, but they're facing two-story walls on each side. No one's really going to see them. And we've tried to use privacy, you know, we've tried to reserve people's privacy as much as possible. And the east-facing side is not pretty, I grant you that. But we were told that because it overlooks residential backyards, we had to respect their privacy. So that's why those awning windows are way up high, so that people can look out and see the hills versus people's yards. And we're happy to change it back the way it was and put big windows in there if you let us. That's no problem. You know, we're, we aim to please. I was a part of the remodel of Dr. Moody's office, a former relative of mine. And, you know, I think that you'll see that, you know, that we do, you know, I, I'm involved with architecturally pleasing buildings, I hope. And I'm a master gardener, so you can be assured that there will be very beautiful garden spaces, the limited nature there are, but they will be nice.
Thank you very much.
So if I could go back to where I was with my comments. First of all, like Sarah, I, when I'm in town, I walk past this project nearly every day. I bike by it often. We were just there for the pumpkin festival, shooting our kids into the air with those slingshot devices in Kitty Fernandez Park. So where, I, I know we've, we've had some, when people are planning for the future and working with us, we've demonstrated flexibility as a planning commission, especially for other projects on Main Street. I do think the planning session guidance we've provided, I do think that's what we should be looking at as we plan for the future, especially for a project like this that is filling, you know, a space that's hopefully starting to become more viable from a commercial perspective. So I think that, I feel the, the new standards we've set are something that I would encourage city staff to work towards. I'm not enthusiastic about going well below those standards. I do think, unless there's some very clear parking rules that are established with city staff. Again, we've, we've demonstrated flexibility, especially when public benefits are brought forward, like on-street EV parking that the public can use. Those are examples where we've historically demonstrated some flexibility. So with respect to the parking, I think we need to look through the math and make sure we're reasonably close. And if, you know, my feedback is if they're looking for an, to reasonably close to what we've established through our previous parking study. And if there are exceptions to that, then, you know, we can have another discussion here. But I would be looking for some public benefit that offsets the commercial interest of the owner of the property. I don't think Kitty Fernandez Park should be considered as a parking site. I do think we should make sure, as we're planning for this, that we have an eye towards the bike and pedestrian master plan that has this as a, an area where bike trails are likely to go through. So I do think we should stick with those. With respect to the architectural design, this is, I want to be careful about, you know, commenting on the look, but this does not feel, especially to the left, does not feel like a commercial structure. I know that the building to the right also doesn't have a strong commercial feel to it. I get that. But as you go through this design process, and as we look to really build a more robust commercial sou, what are we, south end of Maine, I really think there's an opportunity here to take a look at both the existing structure as well as the new structure, especially on the first floor, to make sure that it actually looks like, more like a commercial structure. I think that's really lacking today. And I know we've provided that guidance to other projects, and we've gotten some very good results with some of the new projects that have come forward. So I'm also concerned about the massing. I mean, this has the look of a 19, from a structural perspective, I'm not talking about the facing or the colors or anything like that, I'm just talking about the mass. This has the feel of a motel. It's not, it doesn't feel like a vibrant part of downtown. So I would, I would look at what can be done with massing, what can be done with balconies, you know, what, what can make this an inspiring project. So I would also, my feedback on this is there's a very tall structure a few blocks down the street. I would look at, you know, if I was the owner of this property, I would evaluate, what can you do with the height? You know, and are there ways to change the massing based on the extra height that you have to work with? So I'd, I'd take a look at that, because it would fit into the neighborhood. Again, I would want to see something a little more creative and a little more interesting. I know you've got limited things to work with, but, you know, that's my feedback on the architectural design. I think there's, there's some opportunities here, and that this could be a, you know, make an important contribution to the look and feel on that end of South Maine. And by the way, I really want to thank you for bringing the project forward and collecting feedback. It's not always easy to do. And I apologize if any of my comments come across as offensive to you. I'm just trying to give you my feedback from Architectural Review perspective.
Feel free.
I just had a question regarding, you said regarding the height. Are you suggesting that we go taller? Is that what you're suggesting?
I don't think the, does this project max out the height, Scott?
No.
Again, yeah, I'm, I'm encouraging you to use the space that you have. I mean, there's, it doesn't block the view of the ridge line from Highway One. And there are existing structures that are, again, within a block of where you're at. The Coast Siders buildings are three stories tall.
Oh, you're talking to senior?
Yeah.
Senior area? Oh, you're talking more of a modern look?
I'm not talking about a modern look. I'm saying you have more height to work with.
Well, that would require more parking, unfortunately. Yeah, and...
Or, or changes. So, so I'm not here to help you design or litigate your project. I'm just here to say, in terms of massing, in terms of curb appeal, things that our, our colleagues with architectural backgrounds are going to look at, you have flexibility to, to, to sort of look at other ideas as you approach this. That's my only guidance.
Well, no, I appreciate the feedback. And, you know, initially, we had, we didn't have a craftsman look to it. We had large windows in the front on the lower level to encourage retail space. And then we were told that it wasn't appealing. So I don't, not by this group, no, former group, but, so...
It's a, it's a commercial building. It needs to have a commercial feel. I mean, your, your original instinct was right. And I apologize that you've gotten the runaround, or what feels like the runaround. But to me, again, I would look at, if you have a commercial building, it needs to say, this is a commercial building.
Well, it could be a retail space as well. And I grant you, it doesn't look like a retail space right now, but it could be a commercial space, you know, depending on your opinion. And regarding the, the off-street parking that we're asking about, if you look down at that end of town right now, in the middle of the day, it's pretty empty, I think, most of the time. Because the kids, when kids get out of school, that's when it fills up. And even in the evening, when Petit Beline is going on, you know, that's when it fills up. But in the middle of the day, it's kind of an empty area for parking.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I think, you know, and maybe Jill, maybe as part of your director's report, if you can just give us an update on the Architectural Review Board, and maybe who's on that, and that sort of thing, that'd be great. I agree with a lot of the comments. I also, often when we're commenting on architecture, I kind of feel like, you know, it's kind of like commenting on traffic engineering. So, so I definitely appreciate that we have an Architectural Review Board and experts and those sorts of folks who are going to, going to participate in this. You know, I, I'm totally open to creative solutions on addressing parking, but I'll confess, I wasn't here for the July 23rd study session. And as a bad commissioner, I haven't followed up on those materials, so, so I don't exactly know the conversation that happened there. But I will say that I'm generally open to looking at creative solutions that don't involve taking away public parkland in, in the town. So I wouldn't support any conversion of Kitty Fernandez into parking in any way, shape, or form. I'm in this area often, I've got kids, and so both at Royal Castillo's and, and at Petit Beline. And I will say, while I think, you know, generally on the whole, parking isn't necessarily a problem, there is certain times at, you know, four o'clock and others where everybody's rushing there to pick up. And I'm not saying that that's, that that's the problem of this project, but I'm just putting it out there that it does seem like there's a lot of potential for use of the IDS lot that sits there pretty vacant and open pretty much all the time. I know I have poached in, used it a couple times when I've been trying to pick up my kid. But I'll just say, yeah, that's, it seems like there's potential for share to use. And I think, I think that would be, that would be great. So anyways, I think, I agree, I agree with the idea of trying to, trying to get up, get up the parking to what we can, but I'm certainly willing to consider some, some flexibility there. And excited to see this project come forward. I've been down there, I think, you know, doing something on that lot in that area and just, you know, we've been talking for a long time about, you know, just extending that business presence on Main Street. So seeing what's going in on the former Vet property, you know, which is, I think, has come along pretty nicely, and some of the other things. So excited to see it coming together, so. So looking forward to see what the Architectural Review Board comes out with. I think, you know, actually, I, I liked the design. I agree with what Rick says, I think, in terms of making sure that things look, that they're commercial and business. And I think the opportunity to work with the height is something to look at. But overall, I'm excited to see a project move forward through there. And I think if we can look through the parking questions, I will be happy to consider it. So with that, this is just a study session, no action. Any other comments?
Solar.
Well, I'll just make one other comment, just since Jimmy did. You know, Jimmy likes to speak about, you know, the future of electric vehicles. I'm still hopeful of a future where there aren't any vehicles. I'm certainly not, I'm not the poster child for that, but, but, you know, I think the opportunity to have a very bikeable and walkable downtown is definitely a possibility. So, so while I definitely support electric vehicles and charging stations, I also think it would be great to, you know, just have a non-auto dependent downtown as well. So with that...
I just wanted to say I supported the bike comment, and there was very limited bike parking in the design, so it's another thing to, to, I think there's a lot of support within this commission for bike parking being incorporated into the design.
Plus one.
All right, so with that, we can close the study session. Thank you very much. Look forward to more conversation. Look forward to hearing about the Architectural Review Board and what their, their discussion and what they come up with. That, Jill. We can move into your director's report.
Yeah, thank you. And we, staff also wants to thank our applicant, and we look forward to meeting with them after this and getting them ready to go to the Architectural Advisory Committee, which I'm happy to update you about. They had their orientation on October 17th, so last Thursday. Scott is going to be their liaison, which is fantastic. And he has some experience working with Architectural Advisory Committees, as do I, so we're going to have a lot of fun there. They are sworn in and ready to go. We're going to start out with a once-a-month schedule. They meet at 8:30 in the morning, which is incredibly helpful to us, because we have hit our legal limit for night meetings. And staff really appreciated their ability to do that, and it, it seems like it's going to work great. As announced previously, the committee members are Steve Cuccucci, who is the landscape architect, Linda Ponsini, who is the architect member, and then Chad Hooker, who is our at-large member with design experience and also a resident. And so that's where we're, we're going there. I think they will be really helpful with projects like this, in particular with things like questions about fenestration, trying to, trying to work that through, massing reforms, the fact that sometimes a taller building can have a, a smaller footprint. You know, there's, there's a lot of flexibility about that. And I, I think it's going to add a lot of richness to the quality of the design that you'll see when it comes back. If you have any questions about Architectural Advisory Committee, let us know.
Thank you, just, and thanks for, for correcting me, Architectural Advisory.
Yes, they are advisory to you. Yes, yes, primarily to the Planning Commission, as well as City Council and staff. Let's see here. We need to chat a little bit about your upcoming meetings. October 29th is the joint study session with City Council. That's at 7:00 PM. You'll be at the Adcock. It's one week from now. And if you could, please do a double check on your binders. We're making sure that City Council's draft land use plan binders have every chapter in them. And I imagine over time, it's possible that you're missing a few things. Each chapter has a policy comparison table that we hope you have. Each chapter has a policy comparison table that we hope you have, it's, it's pretty handy. Four of the chapters have errata sheets because we've been kind of doing real-time revisions, so just want to make sure you have the latest and greatest. Then on November 12th, we're putting together your agenda there, but the key item right now that we were getting ready for you is an application from Abundant Grace for their program to be occupying a building they're, they're purchasing at the 500 block of Kelly, so very near here, the, the old thrift shop, the senior coast, senior thrift shop, just by our driveway over here. Um, let's see, got a few other things simmering, I'm not sure how much else we'll have that night. Maybe we'll bring parking code back and we can talk a bit more about it because it's really critical, for example, for this particular applicant to, to know what, what you're looking for.
Sorry, what, what night are we doing that?
Uh, November 12th. So that's your first November meeting. We also need to know if you're going to be available the following, the 26th, for second November meeting, which is Thanksgiving week. I'm seeing a range of facial expressions, so it's, let us, let Bridget know, she'll, she'll ping you with an email. Believe me, your, your staff can go either way, so we're happy to do whichever. All right, I sent you quite a few things today in email because I realized that I'd, I missed one. There was a training opportunity, October 30th, I know several of you have done the first two that were offered through the Home For All, 21 Elements and California, Northern California Chapter of the American Planning Association have been hosting Planning Commission sessions over at the Seminario Library. And the session on the 30th is focused on transportation. I'm going to go, I hope that some of you can go, and I know that's means, meetings two nights in a row for you and I'm sorry about that. So let us, let us know if you want us to register you or if you've done it yourself and so we can just look forward to seeing you there. City Council, last week, they reviewed a draft Affordable Housing Fund Allocation Guideline document that we prepared for them and they gave us some direction, they liked it, we can wrap that up, and they're going to start allocating some of those funds, which is exactly what they had hoped to be able to do. And we'll keep you updated as, as that goes forward. On November 5th, they will have the first reading of the triennial update of the California Building Standards Code. And a couple notable items in that are solar being required on the single family and the pre-wiring for EV and a number of other changes that we're working through. Parks and Recreation Commission, we have a project going through them that we want to make sure you know about and give a plug. Tomorrow night at 7:00 will be a special meeting over at the library. The, the commission will have their regular meeting start at 6, but at 7:00 we will have the, what we're calling the release party of the Poplar Gateways Plan. And it's just to give an overview of it, they will be given the document, it will be in a joint session with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And that will be out and about for a while until we see them again on December 11th, when we will be looking for their, their input. And we'll make sure that this is broadly noticed, it'll be up on the website and we'll have plenty of time with it. You had an, you heard an update about this, a meeting or so ago, Brittany presented the Poplar Steps project. It was a follow-up on an emergency coastal development permit and she gave an overview of what was coming forward in the Poplar Gateways Plan. Once, once the plan is really firmed up, we're kind of be coming back here with the details of that because we need to prepare SEQA coverage for it and it will be in your forum for a while. So just want to keep you in the loop and your, if you'd like, we can send you a link to the plan once it gets posted, which will be over the next couple of days. Questions?
Through the chair. So if more than two of us go to that session, are we having a meeting?
I don't think so, as long as you maintain your distance and don't have a conversation about amongst yourselves about what, you know, any policy issues.
Great, thank you.
I only have one more. So you probably have seen, we received the application for the Surf Beach, Dunes Beach Plan Development Area on September 20th. Your staff is working hard on preparing a comment letter, it's a complex project. We are making sure that we're reviewing this at a policy level. It's really difficult to, to get into the nits of, of project details at this point, but we will be putting a letter out this week, we'll make sure all of our communications are public. The entire project application is posted, it's on the community development page under planning, and I think there's a, Bridget, is it called Planning Projects? I think is the button, and then you can get right to the project. The plans are there, the application for an amendment to the local coastal program, a specific plan, coastal development permit, and a vesting tentative subdivision map are the big portions of that application. We're, once we get through this part of our very early process, we will, we'll come back and talk to you about stepping through a public process where we really see the Planning Commission having a key role. We need to keep you fully in the loop on it and it's, it's always a little bit challenging to have a big project come in while you're in the midst of wrapping up your, your land use plan. So that's what's happened here and we're working through that as well. And that is not an agendas item, so I don't want to get questions about that tonight, if that's okay? That's just an information item, you know where to go and look at everything, so I hope that's helpful to you. And that's all we have tonight, thank you.
I had a question for Jill, unrelated to any specific projects. Just, what's the headline on where we're at with the general plan update, general timing? When are we going to submit something to the Coastal Commission? At least, what's the current thought process, project plan?
Well, we hope to be able to really pin that down after your study session, but our intent was to get through public hearings with your body over the next few months and to wrap up in early 2020 and move over to City Council. And then I don't know how long that will take, we're guessing three to six months. We're hoping on the three-month end of it because they're in the loop and you can help us with that next Tuesday. And of course, you can also help us by, by working with a council person who, who you work with to make sure that they, they know where different parts of the plan are, are being presented. We know everyone has a different component that they're really curious about, so help them out with that. We've been trying to vet the plan with, with council when we have other related items. For example, I've been bringing a lot of housing things to City Council and when we do that, we point out relationships of what they're seeing to things that are in the draft land use plan. So hopefully that, that kind of work is, is helpful to them.
Great. I don't know if now is the right time or maybe at some point, I understand that the governor's passed a number of different, signed, thank you, you know, laws regarding accessory dwelling units, junior dwelling units, those sorts of things.
Yes, there was a, there was a big package and we're on it, reviewing it, folks in my office, many folks, many jurisdictions have interest in this. And of course, you all are in the coastal zone, so there's always a special twist and frequently a little more wiggle room for, for us here. But, you know, we're, we're up to speed on it, we're reviewing it and to the extent it impacts the LCP update, you know, we're working together on making sure we dot i's and cross t's and stay in compliance with the law as it changes.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Likewise with the Raft of Fire.
Yes, we have somebody else looking at all the fire, fire stuff, so yes, we're on it.
Excellent. Okay, with that, we can move into Planning Commission Communications. Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. Just one colleague, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So just one, colleagues, I was looking at the Science Friday podcast site because my wife heard that they were talking about how communities are reacting to sea level rise and climate change. And so I thought that would be interesting and I, what I noticed was that they did not talk about California at all. They talked about communities inland and they talked about the east coast. One of the things that I thought was interesting that we have not discussed was zoning as a way of a, facilitating climate retreat. So for people who were living in the Ohio Valley, let's say, in areas that were becoming increasingly unlivable, they were anticipating that these people are part of their community and they were zoning for it. So they were saying, when you need to retreat, here's a place that you can retreat to. It's a kind of long-term planning that I think speaks to the objectives we have in mind in our local coastal program. And hearing it being talked about was kind of a revelation, so I encourage you to give it a listen. Thank you.
I just wanted to pass along, I guess, two compliments. I was really impressed with how city staff responded to the, to the power shutdown. It was, it was inconvenient, obviously, and all that, but, you know, I was pleasantly surprised when I got up to go to work in the morning that, you know, there was a generator hooked up to the traffic lights at 92 made a huge difference. And I just felt overall the communication and everything else from, from city staff and also from our local newspaper, Haplem Bay Review, I just, I thought it was really good. And, and also with, with the Pumpkin Festival, from my perspective, things seem to work really well or better, certainly better than they have in the past. So just some of the little things about having, you know, additional traffic cops and the dedicated right-hand turn lane and, you know, just a number of those things. I, you know, live not too far off of Highway 92, so I kind of can get a good little perch on how traffic is as I walk out my front door and I can see it sort of blocked up and, you know, in years past, I've seen it locked up till nine, maybe 10 o'clock at night. And this year, 7:30, 8 o'clock, everything was clear, back to normal. So pass along to John or whoever.
I want to echo those comments. I was having dinner with some friends on the east side of Poplar and we were astonished that all the traffic was gone by 7:30, so it's, it's fantastic work. Also want to just, you know, there was a lot of consternation around the security profile that was going to be at the Pumpkin Festival. I think the county sheriff's department struck the right balance, so just, I think it's well done.
Okay, so...
They will be thrilled to hear that. They worked really hard on that traffic plan and on the security plan and I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Okay. Bridget, did you have something?
Oh, I just wanted to, this is Plan HMV, and so if you're missing any of those pieces, that's where you could reference from your binders and then just let us know what we're, you're missing and we'll be happy to print it for you guys.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we got nothing else. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.